Good afternoon, welcome to the Sunday, December 13th, 2020, school committee meeting. This is an emergency meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order and I'll start with introductions to my left.
Jeff Boe.
Rob Mullin.
Good evening, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Mustucci.
Anthony Tinnarello.
Please rise for your pleasure.
Mike Maron, Prof. Scoll.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. New business. COVID-19 update, Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we'll just jump right into the information. I know in a conversation with the chairman, vice-chairman Friday, that there was some concerns about COVID statistics of the community, and I think the committee wants to better understand where we are and what the impact is on the schools itself. So, I'll just, I put together some information. If there's anything else that the committee would like to see, I can certainly look to get that secured in the next day or two for your review as well. But I just want to go through some of the slides that we see regularly. Learning model drivers, and I highlighted the last one, and I think that's where we are today. It's important that we understand the context and interpret data to make the best informed local decisions for all 1,600 students in the Tinsborough Public Schools. This slide has been our lead slide since August. This is what we're committed to, and I think this third bullet speaks to where we are today. As we go forward, and I highlighted it in red, the primary goal for this committee, or we were charged with at the beginning of the year, was to return students and staff to in-person school experience as soon as possible in a safe learning environment while following guidelines grounded in science and data. And again, another slide that you've seen since August. This is what the DESI Learning Model Guidance is with respect to the mass DPH metrics that come out weekly in the COVID-19 report. And I highlighted the third one because I cited this in our letter the other day. We are designated a right community, and we should implement a hybrid model, which is where we are, while maximizing in-person learning time for high-need students, which we are doing. So, we are where we need to be with respect to DESI guidance at this time. That being said, let's go into the metrics a little bit. This is not a new report, this is what you see, these are the numbers that I cite weekly. You can see that we are now week four of being in the red. You can see that our positivity rate has jumped from 7.47% to 13.55%. We've had 80 cases to 160 cases in the past two weeks. And again, that's a two-week, 14-day positivity snapshot. So, we always start with that. And the COVID status review team, which Chairman McMahon is a part of, reviews that every Monday. They come together. That committee is made up of Ryan McMahon, Sarah Lewenzic, Representative Central Office Administration, Kerry Oon from the Board of Health, Michelle Riley from the Teachers Association, also the lead nurse in the community, and Carol Byrne, thank you, from also from the Teachers Union. So, that group meets regularly to talk about these numbers and the metrics. But I think one of the things that we're always concerned about, that's a high-level 10,000-foot look at Tinsborough. I think the question is, what does it look like in the Tinsborough Public Schools? So, we're going to spend some time on this slide talking about it. So, we bring this information up at every school committee meeting to really understand where we are. Currently, there are 17, we've had 17 total cases in the month of December. Of those 17 cases, two have already cleared. So, as of 12:00 today, Sunday, there are 15 active cases in the Tinsborough Public Schools. More contextual information, there are 1,476 people, students, staff, that report to work or come in person regularly in our district. We have 15 active cases, we have 37 total cases since September 14th, and that represents, right now, we have 1.02% active cases in our district, 2.51% cumulative cases in our district. I think it's important to clarify, if you are a remote learner, you are not counted in these statistics. This information is specific so that the school committee can understand who's setting foot in the buildings, so that if you need to make a decision about learning models, you can. So, that's the context of this data. So, 15 current active cases in the district, and you can see the cumulative down below at each school, with 21 at TES, 10 at TMS, five at THS, and one TPS. TPS, again for clarification, is a staff member who works between multiple buildings and/or central office. So, not necessarily designated to one school or area. So, let's go a little bit deeper into, any questions on this?
What's the significance of the bold?
The bold, oh, thank you. The four cases that are bold, I'm going to talk about a little bit later, but that was one cluster that we had at the elementary school, and that's one classroom that we shut down on Monday of this week. So, we talked, and I think it was the last school committee meeting where, Becky, it might have been you that asked, you know, do we need to call an emergency meeting to make a decision on schools and shutting the schools? And we don't. You know, I told you at the time that if we noticed, if I noticed a trend happening somewhere in the district, that we would react to that as quickly as possible. And we did that this past week, and I'm going to talk a little more about that later on. So, the committee will make a decision about a learning model change, but if there's something specific, a flare-up here or there, I would act immediately to mitigate that. So, those four, which you're referring to, was a cluster at the elementary school that we actually have shut down the classroom, and I'll get into that a little bit more later on.
And if I may.
Sure.
Do we know the breakdown between students and staff?
We do.
I know we don't like to discuss that, but is that?
Because we don't want to identify anybody.
We do. So, we've been advised by our attorney, given the size of our district, to not delineate or distinguish between students and staff. We cannot provide identifiable information. In addition to the actual data that's public, that people know about, there's some more information that I asked our school nurses to provide to us. So, if you look at this, we'll just start with the elementary school. All of this information is up 2:00 PM on Friday afternoon, and I think that's one of the things, this is such a fluid time right now. Cases arising, they're dropping, they're falling on, they're coming on, it's hard to stay current with the data, so we took a snapshot on time at 2:00 PM on Friday. As of 2:00 PM on Friday afternoon, we have a total of 648 people that come in and out of the elementary school at any point during the week. Currently, our nurses at the elementary school are tracking 69 of them. So, what does that mean, tracking? They're watching and following on a daily basis people that have been identified as close contact that are not symptomatic. There are 36 of those people. They're following people who have been identified as close contact that are symptomatic. There are 11 of those people. And they're following people who are not close contacts but may show some symptoms, and there are 22 of those people. So, at TES, our school nurses are tracking 69 of the 648 people. At TMS, there are 392 people that come in and out of our schools. Our nurses are tracking 22 of them. 18 close contacts that are not symptomatic, no close contacts that are symptomatic, and four symptomatic people who are not necessarily defined as a close contact. THS?
Can I, can I?
Yes.
Can you explain to me what a not-close contact?
Somebody who called in sick that is presenting symptoms but isn't identified by CTC or the Board of Health as a close contact or has not received a test yet, or hasn't tested yet.
So, they're not actually?
So, if I call you?
They're not a close contact to anybody that tested positive is what I'm saying.
They're not a close contact. If a mom calls in and says, "My son's got a sore throat," or "He's been throwing up," or anything like that, those are all symptomatics of COVID, but they're also symptomatics of several other things. So, that's just another person that we're tracking just to keep an eye on it.
Dr. Flanagan?
Yes.
When you say "tracking," are these individuals still able to come into the school buildings, or have they been put onto like some sort of a quarantine and into remote?
So, great question. If they are close contact, they're not coming to the school because they've been identified by the Board of Health or CTC. The not-close contact is, we're asking families, and our families are doing a great job, we're asking families to not send kids to school if they're symptomatic in any way, and we appreciate the families are doing a good job with that. So, somebody who's not close contact but symptomatic, if they're symptom-free or asymptomatic or have cleared, then they are going to come to school. So, it's hard to answer that exactly, accurately, given the fact that it's such a fluid situation.
And Dr. Flanagan, have we had any instances, and you may not know because I didn't give you this question ahead of time, have we had any instances where people who are considered designated close contact have come to school? And even if we haven't had the case yet, what would the protocols be for that?
So, it's hard to know, because not all contact tracing is done by our local Board of Health. The numbers right now means that we need assistance from the CTC. So, if the CTC Contact Tracing Commission at the Massachusetts level called my house and told my daughter that she was a close contact and couldn't come to school, that necessarily isn't necessarily important. It's just difficult to track. It's hard to wrap our head around what that looks like. Okay, so back to the high school. We have 430 staff and students in person at any point during the week, and we're tracking 33 of those individuals. 23 are defined close contacts who are not symptomatic, three are defined close contacts who are symptomatic, and seven are just other students and staff that have symptoms but not necessarily COVID-related, we don't know that. So, that's the nurse-tracking data. So, we hear about the 15 active cases, and that's a big number, and that, I don't mean it's a big number, that's the important number that we need to follow right now. So, we need to understand a little bit more about that number. So, we wanted to find out when quarantine ends for those 15 active cases and when those individuals can potentially return to in-person learning in school. So, and I do have to thank, I have to thank our nurses who are doing a phenomenal job, and every time I ask them for information, they're quick, and Michelle Riley taking the lead on it, they're doing incredible work, and they're working non-stop. So, every time we want data, we go to them, and they've done a great job producing it for us. And this is a good story to understand right here. Of the 15 active cases we have in the district, five of them fall off or clear tonight at 12:00. So, five people will be in school tomorrow. So, our active cases potentially, pending no notifications today, will be 10. On Tuesday, another five cases fall off, implying more students will be coming to school on Tuesday, or staff. So, this is, the red is the date that people are in quarantine until, and green, return in-person learning, is when they come back. So, that's the story behind the 15 cases right now. You can see, as you all know, we had a case yesterday, so I don't have the information about when that person will be cleared to come back, which is why it says TBD. But I'll need to work with our nurses on Monday to better understand that case. So, that's where we are right now as a school community. So, that being said, we have 11 active cases at TES of the 648 people, that represents 1.7% of the population. At TMS, we have three active cases, there are 392 people in and out of that school, that's 0.77% of the population. At THS, we have one active case of the 430 people, that's 0.23% of that population. So, that's where we are in terms of active cases, positive cases.
May I?
Yep.
Out of the, and I don't know if we can answer this without identifying people, out of the 10 that can return by Tuesday?
Yep.
Do we know the breakdown of those 10 as far as elementary school, middle school, high school?
Yeah, it's right there.
It's right there. It's the second column.
The second column.
No, I meant return. So, I know the totals of the 15.
It's the second column on the left. It's the second yellow column on the left.
All right, I'm sorry, you're right. I missed that, sir.
Okay. And of those 11, just one last point, of those 11 cases at TES, we know four from that one cluster, which I will talk about in a minute. Go ahead, Julie, sorry.
No, no, no problem. I'm not sure if you can answer this one either, but of these 15 cases, are they all learning remotely? Is that what they're doing while they're home?
Yes, so, good question. So, if it is a staff member, some staff members have decided to work from home unless they're not well and they're symptomatic and they don't want to work from home. If they're a student, they are all learning remotely, if they're able to, if they're well enough to, yes. Okay. In addition, this was a snapshot provided at the last meeting, we wanted to understand what we did for isolation, quarantine, and illness, so people who have not tested positive, these are not positive cases, these are just additional people that didn't come to school for any reason. On October 1st, November 2nd, and December 1st, I've since added Thursday, December 10th information as well. And you'll see, you'll see an increase there at the elementary school. And part of that was because of the cluster, I'll talk about that, I keep saying that, but I'm going to get there.
Dr. Flanagan?
Yes?
Is there, looking, just looking at the elementary schools particularly, where you see that pretty sizable jump from the first to the 10th, how does that compare to a regular school year from a total number?
In what sense? I'm sorry.
In the sense of what you would see from, you know, over a year that we wouldn't be looking at COVID numbers any year that you just have regular.
So, flu season last year, I'll tell you, was probably our worst attendance ever at TES. There were weeks where high 30% of the school was out, so 150, 200 kids and staff were out battling the flu last January, February. So, that's where those numbers were, if that's a comparative you can use.
Interesting, yeah.
So, let me talk about the targeted approach to remote learning and talk about the cluster. So, one TES classroom was moved to remote learning model due to a high percentage of positive cases of symptomatic people in one room. So, a little history behind it, two staff members had, were symptomatic, two students were identified as close contacts. The school notified Monday morning, myself, Mrs. Kavanaugh, Mrs. Lewenzic had several phone calls early Monday morning, and made the decision before school started that we would notify these people that we're going to close the classroom and go remote for a few days, because we want to better understand what was going on in that room. Upon watching that play out over the next couple of days and more positive cases coming in in that one cluster, we decided that it would make sense to close that particular classroom, that substantially separate classroom through January 4th. It's important information to know that that impacted between 25 and 30 people in terms of who was, so all those people right now are working remotely and are attending school remotely. But it was, it speaks to how we can understand, we created schedules in groups of cohorts and really understand how we can strategically think about closing down areas that potentially could flare up. So, that's what happened in that one room. Any questions about that? So, additional information for context, I think, you know, as you're thinking about decisions, shifting to remote learning potentially, it can happen by classroom, team, grade level, school, or the entire district. One thing that I think we've seen is when kids come to school, they're in a controlled setting, and the mitigation strategies that are in place are proving effective. Mass, physical distancing, hand washing, cleaning protocols. We've had zero positive cases from individuals identified as close contacts in classrooms that have fully implemented mitigation strategies. So, you know that we have some classrooms in our district where full implementation of mitigation strategies isn't possible, given a student's inability to wear a mask or some students needing physical assistance. So, that's a different classroom than a typical classroom. So, when classrooms are implementing full mitigation strategies, we've had zero spread in the school. Just another contextual point.
Dr. Flanagan?
Yes?
Have we had any in-school transmission period?
This one cluster, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Other issues that we're looking at, staff attendance issues, certainly something we need to consider. Snapshot on time Friday, TES, there were 22 staff who weren't available to come to work, 16 of them potentially COVID-related, 14 of them worked from home. So, staffs who were identified as close contact are teaching from home on most cases. As you know, we've hired two long-term substitutes for each one of the school. Within the past few weeks, we decided that we may need a little bit more support, so I'll go into three full-time, long-term substitutes in the school. So, basically, that's three people that come to work every day and are assigned wherever we need it. And if we need more people, it causes the administration to really look at schedules and reassign power professionals if we have to. In some places, we're combining classrooms or using different learning areas. So, there's a lot going on to keep the operation of the school moving forward. I will say that, go ahead.
I just had a question about that combining classrooms or using carriers from other areas. Doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose of the cohort model of keeping people separate from each other to try to reduce the spread?
It impacts it, but it keeps the operation of the school moving forward.
Okay.
Yep. And again, the cohort model, the way we have it set up, when we put somebody in to cover a classroom, we know who that person is. The cohort model is really meant for contact tracing, so we need to know, and we can't just have free-for-all kids walking down the hall. We need to know when kids are moving, who's coming out of these cohorts. So, as long as we know it and assign it and keep track of it, it's really for contact tracing purposes, so, yes. And I think the other thing that's important is, you know, our learning model. Our learning model is concurrent learning, so our teachers are teaching kids hybrid and remote. So, in the event one of our teachers has to go out, they can still do that from home if they've been identified as a close contact. I will say in some neighboring districts, one of the challenges I'm hearing from my peers is operationally, it's becoming very difficult for them, because they have some teachers that are only hybrid teachers and don't happen to say a remote component, so it's difficult for them to teach their kids when they are quarantined. So, it makes it a little bit more difficult because you have to have obviously somebody in the room to cover the kids that are in person. So, just additional information for your thought processing conversation. So, that's where we are in a snapshot. Those are the high-level numbers, I'll probably go back to this slide, TPS summary, and can I answer any questions? Both committees may have.
Dr. Flanagan, when any of the teachers need to be, work from home, whether it's they're, they actually tested positive or there's just a concern and they're just being cautious, how does that impact the students that are in person for that particular day on that cohort? Like, who's watching the classroom and how is that, what are the benefits to the students that are in person if the teacher is at home?
So, we would put a power professional in the room if we had to, to support, to make sure the kids were at least monitored in-person, right? The kids would come into class, they learn right through their device, it would be like a remote day for them almost, but they, you know, so I think the question you say, it's different, right? Because if you're talking to the elementary school, that means somebody, either a long-term summer power professional's in there with the kids all day. At a high school, if it's a teacher, that's one of five classes. If it's a middle school, it's one of six classes. So, it depends on what school we're talking about and what the impact is. But, you know, certainly, it still allows the kids to come to school, be in person, to have lunch, to socialize with other kids, and it keeps a routine going for them and for their family at home. I think that's another component we need to consider is supporting families as well.
Dr. Flanagan, are we notified when remote learners test positive?
No.
So, the school does not?
Nope.
Receive any notification, okay.
Nope. Our practice has been to notify the entire community because it impacts potentially your decision of sending your student to school. The students at home remotely and they test positive, it's really their business. It's not, it doesn't impact any one of our school community. Another thing about the notifications, if you receive a notification from us about TMS community, that's specifically a student or staff in that school, it's not a family member. It's somebody who's set foot in school at some point during the week. Example, if I'm a seventh grader and my father tests positive, we're not going to notify families on that until the seventh grader tests positive. So, it has to be somebody that sets foot in our school, that's what the notifications are.
No, I understand that, I was asking if the school is notified.
Yes, we do know that, we do have that information.
That's what I was asking.
Yep, we do have that information.
So, the follow-up would be, I don't expect to have this answer now, but what percentage of remote learners have tested positive? So, we can see how that compares with the in-school learners.
I can get that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Julie?
Yeah, I think I forgot my question. It was something about the, I don't know, it'll come back.
Okay.
I'll pass right now.
Ms. Mullin?
Thank you. According to numbers that I've seen, both on the Mass State Department of Health, numbers that are, well, I won't say reported in media, but they sometimes are, and I guess maybe some conversations elsewhere, the discussion has been, that I've seen, that many children are asymptomatic due to their age, their health. Would that be something that you would think is, is possible, or is something that we're seeing, that there are children who are, many children who are, become more conjecture than anything else at this point? Conversations have been, both in medical, in medical circles and in the state, that children tend to have a higher rate of being asymptomatic, not showing any symptoms once contracting COVID. So, that would lend itself to, in our schools or any school district, if the children are not being tested, that they may not ever show that they have COVID. That could lower the transmission rates that we're seeing, because we, well, it could artificially lower the transmission rates that are currently being reported, because many of these children aren't being tested and may be carrying it. So, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about touting our transmission numbers. I understand why that those numbers are separated from the general population, and I'm not saying it's here.
I'm not touting, I'm reporting.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. I understand, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying that this is what I'm reading elsewhere, not numbers here in the school, sorry about that. So, that worries me that our in-transmission rate numbers are artificially low because of that. So, separating out numbers that happen within the school from the general population of the city or the town that they're located in can be dangerous, in my opinion, from seeing numbers elsewhere. You know, you brought up the 13.55% positivity rate that's going on in the, from the past three weeks in Tinsborough. Just to give some example of some of the other towns, you know, that were located near, Lowell at 11.9, Drake at 11.8. That's, you expect that in a larger city or town that's densely populated. Westford is at 5.4, Shempsid is 6.7, Dunstable 6.3, and yet, we're the highest out of all of them. In fact, over the last three weeks, we are number eight in the state for positivity rate, just barely behind Lawrence, which was number one, which there at about 14%. So, I think it's, it's dangerous for us to tout these numbers when we don't have a full idea of what's actually going on, how these are being transmitted within the town and cities, and what it's actually doing within the schools, because we know that people are not following guidelines anywhere within, throughout the state, except it seems like in Boston, which has a relatively low transmission rate. So, I think we should be looking at these numbers as context to the entire town and what the town numbers look as in context with the entire state, as to how we should be addressing the possibility of these numbers, our internal numbers being wrong, not by much, I don't think, but they can be off, and our planning, which I think is the most important.
Can I just clarify that the numbers, they're not, the numbers aren't wrong, they may not tell the whole picture.
Okay, okay, I'll give you that one, absolutely. I think what we need to do is look at the cases in context throughout the entire state and our town as to how we are planning for the future, okay? I'm not saying... I'm not saying shut the schools down today or for tomorrow, okay? I'm saying that during this summer, we did an incredible job of planning for the opening of the schools, okay? I think it went extremely well, you know, and I applaud everyone in this room and our entire staff for doing a fantastic job at planning. And I think what we were doing is using those numbers at that time on what our plan should be and guidance from the CDC and the Department of Health. These, however, that plan did not take into consideration these kinds of numbers that are starting to explode now, right? After Thanksgiving, we're seeing this kind of rate transmission, and that was only after a four-day weekend. I'm very afraid to look at the numbers, what's going to happen after our holiday winter There's a lot of talk around the country concerning that, in different medical circles again, and I'm concerned at what this could do to our numbers and our, and our kids and us, excuse me, specifically our staff, who seems to be getting the brunt of this. I think we need to reconvene, not just as a four- or five-member group, to make these plans going forward. I think we need to be a larger group in creating these plans similar to what we did over the summer. We need to replan, we need to set guidelines as to what we're going to do if this happens. And I know this, you know, as a superintendent, you have the ability to shut this down immediately, and you should, absolutely, but that's also reactive. And I know sometimes we can only react to these numbers, but we need to have a concise plan in place as to what we're going to do.
Can I, can I?
And I will be, and I will end my soliloquy right there.
What, what type of plan are you looking for, more specifically?
I do believe that we should seriously consider a plan that includes going full remote from the holiday break to Martin Luther King Day. And not having kids in school that could potentially worsen these numbers. I think we're seeing this, these numbers increase due to the lack of distancing over the Thanksgiving break, and I think it's only going to get worse for a week and a half.
We.
Can I just make one point of clarification on the plan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, so just, just to clarify, down the middle, we do have a plan that allows us to move between models. So we wouldn't necessarily be talking about touching that. What you're talking about is making adjustment to our learning model, not necessarily the plan. And I just want to use those terms unchangeably. We have a reopening plan that allows us to go from full in-person to fully remote. So that's already been negotiated by the future, so that's in place. It's a matter right now, I think what I'm hearing, I was looking at changing of the school calendar and/or the learning model. One clarification.
I think it's something we need to consider. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying we definitely have to do it. I think it's something we need to consider as a group.
So I don't know that I agree with some of your points. You say our in-school numbers are artificially low, but then you say the numbers in town are high, and to your belief, correct me if I'm wrong, that's because people aren't following the guidelines. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I think in school, it's a much more controlled environment than out in the world, where we are enforcing those guidelines. I think the result of that is these low numbers. I think they go hand in hand. The positivity rate is also an artificially high number, because people who are getting tested are close contacts, had exposure, or symptomatic. So that number is going to be biased towards people who are more likely to test positive anyway. So I don't believe that 13% of the town has COVID. I don't think you can extrapolate that to the entire population.
I'm not, I'm not actually saying that that's for the entire town. I'm just comparing that number to other towns, okay? And I think we can look at that and say, other towns are doing a better job at it in following these regulations, or nobody's being tested in other towns. Or maybe we're getting, we're getting a whole lot more tests than other towns, okay? But there's a huge discrepancy there, okay, that we have to continue looking at.
Agreed, but our role as a school committee isn't to look at the town and tell the town what to do, it's to look at our schools. And our schools are very successful so far with how we handle COVID. Where we have our mitigation strategies in place, we're not seeing any transmission. So I'm very comfortable with the job Dr. Flanagan and his team are doing.
And just know, I'm not criticizing any of that either, okay?
No, no, I understand. I didn't mean to imply that.
They've done a wonderful job, absolutely. I applaud the job that our, that our schools are doing, okay? I just see with the numbers that have increased this past two weeks since Thanksgiving, I think they're also higher than that because not everyone has gotten tested.
Yeah, but we can't go by those numbers.
No, we can't.
We have to go by the evidence that's in front of us. And I think our numbers are inflated from, from one classroom.
Okay, but we also have to be able to extrapolate that and think for ourselves as well, okay? Just following raw data, the numbers that are put in front of us, okay? Doesn't mean that we should just say, oh, that's that.
No, I agree with you, but we could also come back and say that 40% of rapid tests are false positives. Are those false positives then counted into your numbers? Because if they are, then that skews that whole population of people as well.
Okay.
And I don't, do you know what I'm saying? So I don't, me personally, I'm not looking at the state. I'm looking at Tingsborough. And I'm looking at the education, health, and well-being of Tingsborough students as a whole, and our staff, because our staff is just as important as our, as our students. And if you're looking at the numbers, and what I'm looking at, which is the only thing we really have concrete, other than if I watch this TV station, it tells me this. If I watch this TV station, it tells me something different. If I watch this show or listen to this expert or that expert or this doctor or that doctor, you could call, there's no, nobody has a clue on what all this really truly is. So the only information that I can go by are the numbers that are presented in front of us. So it, we're in a very difficult position, all of us. It's true. But what percentage of the students do you think that are not being tested may be positive?
I'm not qualified to make that.
Right. Is that even relevant information in this?
Well, it's irrelevant in a sense, but at the same time, how would that change our numbers? Why would we go full remote for a number that we don't know what it is? So we have to base our decisions on the numbers that are in front of us.
I want to clarify something.
My, I'm going to base my opinion. I'm not telling you what to do. I'm going to base my opinion on the numbers that are in front.
I respect your opinion. I respect everyone else's opinion in here as well.
So I just want to clarify something. You made a comment that we can't just look at the number and go by the number. I think from day one of planning for this year, we've been very committed and just hyper-focused on context. We have refused to draw any lines in the sand and said, if we hit this positivity rate, we're going to, you know, switch learning models. If we hit this statistic, we're going to switch. We've said from day one that context is key to everything. So we're not looking at just a number and saying, well, here's, here's a number, we need to make a decision. Everything revolves around context. And I think the context currently is, we're not seeing transmission in schools. And our schools have proven to be safe. I think for a lot of these kids, it's safer and more beneficial to be in school right now as much as they can, in light of, you know, the town is, the positivity rate in town is concerning, absolutely. You know, we've shrunk back from how often we go out, you know, my family. I think a lot of families should do that. But in spite of all that, the schools are safe, and it's shown to be safe. And I think the benefits are just far away the risk at this point.
So I think what Rob is suggesting, and, and, you know, if I'm misspeaking, please let me know, Rob, is that the numbers aren't showing that, you know, the schools are unsafe, absolutely. But I think what he's looking at is not a change in the model, but taking a proactive approach to the holiday season, so we don't find ourselves mid-January, early February, looking in the rearview mirror and saying, we should have taken a quick hiatus and gone remote for a period of time or extending the holiday period as remote, and then we find we're having to make a decision in the future that we lose more in-person time. And am I understanding that right, Rob?
I'd agree with you on that.
However, I also feel that what Dr. Flanagan said about the numbers that typically are out during this season, and I've worked in school districts and schools for many years, and this is what you see, every January, February, number of cases, number of kids out, transmission of colds, transmissions of flus, transmission, everything goes up because we're all inside with each other. So I think we have to expect it's going to continue going up, no matter if the holiday or not. January, February goes up. That's how it is. And we just have to, I think, do our due diligence, separate into cohorts as much as possible. If you can, separate paraprofessionals or people that go into the classrooms into cohorts as much as possible. I know part of that is very difficult to do because I deal with the same thing every day, but really trying to, because, again, you don't want one person going from classroom to classroom to classroom covering and then spreading. So I think those are the strategies that I would rather look for rather than thinking full remote. And the reason why I say not full remote is because we really have to think of our mental health of our kids. This is really doing a job on a lot of kids. And our mental health is, we know, is best be in school. It helps their mental health more. So that's my feeling, is that I know it's going to go up. I know the rates are still, the numbers are going to go up. They're going to. But is it because of Christmas? Is it because of people getting together? Or is it because of what typically happens during this time period? And you said last year, you're 30% of the people out just because of colds and flus and everything. So, so we really need to look at that. And I feel like the mental health of the kids should be up there too. And whereas, I know I had mentioned last week about how many kids have been hospitalized. I don't know if we have any of those numbers, but that's, you know, something, you know, to look at too. Not that we want to base it on that, but it's something to think about. That's my rate.
Dr. Flanagan?
Chris.
What happens to school sports if we were to go full remote? Does it impact them?
So it's a local decision. If, we have to work through our local Board of Health on this to understand where they are with it. It would, then we'll come back to the school committee ultimately and take action on that. So it's a local decision.
Okay. So there's no automatic impact, district goes full remote, sports shuts down?
There was an advisory earlier in the year, which has since been updated and interpreted differently, and it's kind of, you know, people believed in August that if the community was red and went remote, that sports had to stop. But that's no longer the case. It's left up to the local to make that decision. I would just say optics-wise, you know, optics-wise, you'd have to consider that.
Understood.
Dr. Flanagan?
Absolutely.
Dr. Flanagan, I don't know if you can speak to, the DESI dashboard indicated that there were three cases last week in our schools, but we had more communication than that. Do you know why there was a discrepancy in the DESI dashboard of positivity versus the Tingsborough dashboard?
I can't speak to that. I can tell you that every now and again, I get a text from DESI about the number of cases that were reported, though that's not necessarily accurate. So I don't know what that story is, to be honest with you.
Okay, and then?
I just, I want parents to know that the reason you get multiple emails during the day is because as soon as we get notification that there's a positive case in the district, you're going to get an email from me. You got one on Thanksgiving, you got one the day after Thanksgiving. So we are on it the second we get it. I can't speak to DESI. I'm saying, trust that information.
Yep, okay, all right. I mean, and to that point, like, I'd like to stress to the community, Dr. Flanagan's working around the clock. He works on the weekends, on the holidays, like, all the time to address this and stay on top of this. So, you know, any questions that I or any of our board members have today is not a slight at Dr. Flanagan. Like, we know that you're working harder than you've ever worked before, and I think I can speak for all of us when I say, thank you so much for everything that you're doing on this. But I do have more questions. So when we're, when the contact tracing is being done and recognizing that the contact tracing is not being performed by the school, so I'm not sure if we have an answer for this today, do we know if the source of the positivity is being identified? So if I were to test positive today and the contact tracing were to take place, would it go back to the source or is it only concerned about who I may have come in contact with and spread it to?
So I'm going to say something. I don't know if I answered your question, but I was actually watching an interview this morning. Joan Heller was interviewing the mayor of Somerville, and he made an interesting point that 30%, or I think he said, well, 30% of people that test positive aren't even necessarily receiving timely and or accurate notification from the CTC or Board of Health. I think it's just a gap there. So, so in terms of notification, I know that CTC and the Board of Health are working to do that. I don't know what their success rate is. So that being said, if I'm the positive case, you don't know who my close contacts are until you talk to me. So unless we had that conversation and I could identify when I was A for asymptomatic 48 hours prior to that, or when I tested positive 48 hours prior to that, that's when you shed virus, unless you know that information, you're not going to be able to find out who those definable close contacts are. Does that answer your question?
It does to a degree. I think what I was trying to get at is, do we have mystery sources out there? And it sounds like to some degree, we may have mystery sources. We may have a student or a staff member or community members even, although that's not what we're here to discuss, that are testing positive and they don't know how they got it.
Maybe, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that's data we don't have. And so I'd like to make the point that, you know, we're trying to base everything off of context and data, and there's data we don't have. And so we can say that we have this data and we're basing our information off of this set of data, but there are other data points that are missing from this conversation.
And maybe missing forever. I'm not sure this data we can get.
You're right, you're right. The other data that I'd like to provide, and it was published in some official source, and at this point, I've read so many official sources, I'm not sure what it was. It wasn't on the news, or maybe it was, but we don't have any more ICU beds in the northeast of Massachusetts. The hospitals are filling up with COVID cases and the ICUs are filling up. There are no more ICU beds in the northeast of Massachusetts. And it's not to say that every case, or even a high percentage of every case, is resulting in a hospital stay or an ICU stay, but these beds are no longer available. They're filled with patients. So that's just something else I'd like to make sure that we're aware of, because even though it is a greater community thing, it impacts our schools if we have in-school transmission, which we do have in-school transmission. And so I understand that it's limited to a certain category, but we do have in-school
Can I, can I ask a question? Full hospital beds does not necessarily, I guess, I've got to think about how I want to say this, but what is the average age of those individuals? Where are they, are they coming from nursing homes? Are they coming from prisons? Are they coming, because that's a big concern right now, apparently. Just because we have full hospital beds doesn't mean that 18 and younger in our schools are affected by those hospital beds. So I'm not quite sure what the comparison is.
That's a great point. Because I'm actually focusing on our staff, because we're equally concerned about the staff as well as the students, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So, you know, it's this, the staff is actually my point of that comment. Because we are seeing, and I don't know what the numbers are, but we are seeing a higher percentage of adults that are hospitalized versus children. And you're correct, you're correct. And, you know, to your point about nursing homes and prisons, we don't have any nursing homes or prisons in the town of Tingsborough. And some of those other towns around us that have lower percentages of positivity do have nursing homes and prisons.
We do have a very large population of 55 and older communities, so that may be driving these numbers as well.
It might be. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I think that's all outside of the scope of what we're here for, though.
No, it's. No, it's...
But that, sorry, because that point was really to the 13.55%, which is really what, you know, one of the factors that sparked my concern for today. And so, you know, I would also like to understand, within the COVID status review team discussions, have we had any of the committee members, I guess I'll call them committee members, express the request for us to go remote?
No.
So nobody on the COVID status review has requested that we go remote?
So I missed this past Monday. I was in New York on business, so I can't speak for this past Monday. But prior, no.
I have personally, outside of the COVID status review team, Michelle Riley, in her capacity as lead nurse, has asked me to go to consider remote, particularly in January, concerned for, she actually brought it up before Thanksgiving. She's talked to me about it and she's brought it up again to consider going remote in January with concern for the break. So not, she's a member of that team, but didn't talk to the team, talked to me about it. I don't know that she talked to the team about it. I'm just providing another piece of information.
And so one of the pieces that I'd like to see if we could pull together is a joint meeting with the school committee and the Board of Health. I'm not saying that the agent of the Board of Health, I would like to meet with the board itself, similar to how we do a tri-board meeting, where we meet with the Board of Selectmen. We don't meet with Matt Hansen, we meet with the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to meet with the Board of Health and the school committee to discuss our impact to the community and whether it makes sense for us to continue to follow this model, whether, you know, they're the professionals about this topic. Thank you.
We're good.
Can I just ask, who is, how many people are on the Board of Health?
I think there's five. I could be wrong.
I believe it's a five-member board.
If I managed to chair. I know there's consent about the holidays coming up. Christmas is on a Friday, and I think that's the holiday we're really all concerned about. I don't think New Year's Eve is going to be a big deal in most households. There's no bars open, there's no restaurants open. I mean, everything's going to be pretty much shut down. So I think Christmas is our big concern. And I know it is mine when we look at the overall picture. We're off for eight days after Christmas. The CDC and DESI has made it now a five-to-seven day, if I heard and understand that correctly, for contact tracing on whether or not you, it's no longer 10 days. They dropped it to five to seven. We would know what the population of people possibly would be during that eight days of how bad our Christmas break may be, if not within a few days after that. I would recommend that we stay status quo. We only have really four more days of school that our students will actually be in school, the majority of them. Two days this week, two days next week. And then Cohort B actually only has two more days. And revisit this on the Saturday after January 1st, whatever day that, Friday would be, or Saturday or Sunday, and see where we are with our numbers. That's my thought process.
Tony, I'm in agreement with that. I think that's a great idea to schedule a meeting for the 2nd of January.
See, they might stick a light.
And this way, we could, but what I'd like to express to the community is there's the potential that that meeting could result in no change. We continue life as usual. But that meeting could also result in a change, where we say, "Hey, we don't feel good about these numbers. We're going to make a change." And that change could potentially, I'm kind of making some assumptions here, but it could potentially go into effect on that Monday, the 4th. And I know, because I know that the school committee has, we've tried very hard to make sure that we provide the community enough notice as possible. And I just don't want to get caught in that web of, "We're not providing the community enough notice, so we're not going to..."
But that could happen tomorrow.
I would suggest we push it up to the 9th, though, because the numbers on the 2nd will be through the week of Christmas. It won't have any numbers reflecting an impact of Christmas.
Sure, so then we can go remote the week of the 4th and then have a meeting on the 9th.
Why would we go remote on the 4th?
I think we should look at the numbers on January 2nd. Stay status quo to January 2nd. And then if we have to have another meeting on the 9th, we do that. We also have a meeting on the 15th.
So I guess, I'm trying to understand, the reason for the meeting on the 2nd, I thought you were saying, was to look at the impact of Christmas.
We will have some idea of how, we won't have the exact numbers?
We won't have any idea of that.
But we would have CDC trace, we would have, we would have in-town contact tracing, how many students that we don't believe will come back.
How far behind are the testing at this point?
Christmas is the Friday before.
I'm not looking at town numbers, I'm looking at school numbers. We would know somewhere around January 2nd from the Board of Health how many, I'm assuming, Tingsborough students or Tingsborough staff will not be coming back Monday, the 4th due to coronavirus. Is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, okay. If you're concerned about families getting together at Christmas, you know, at least in my family, it's usually, you know, Christmas Eve or Christmas Day when most families get together. The incubation period is longer than a few days.
It's five to seven days.
So if we meet, so if you start seeing sickness five to seven days later, you, that's fine.
We're not in school. We're looking at January 28th, 29th, the 30th. If we met on Saturday, the 2nd, we can look at what our numbers are, who's returning, who's not. By then, all, every single case that was up there will have dropped off the board and we can see how many new cases we have in Tingsborough.
Okay.
That's my suggestion on one of the seven people.
So we don't actually have any...
Does Mike Moran have anything to add?
So Mike Moran, the Wi-Fi is sketchy here. Mike's actually watching through a Facebook stream right now because he's having a hard time hearing. We can try calling him again, see if he has any input. I've heard several suggestions. I haven't, we haven't received any actual motions to take any, take any actual action. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion or anything.
I'll make the motion to stay status quo and revisit this on January 2nd or 3rd, whatever works for the committee, whether it's Saturday or Sunday.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, the motion go along. I feel we should not...
Okay.
Mike, I'm going to put you on speakerphone so you can have a minute to say. We have a motion on the floor from Tony to stay status quo and have a school committee meeting on January 2nd, with a second by Julie. If you'd like to say a few words, I'm going to put you on speakerphone now. I'll set mic.
I think we should not go full remote yet. I think we need more data. I'm on the side of Mr. Ternarella. I did with him, if you can hear me clearly.
Yes, yes.
We can hear you, yep. Thank you.
That's pretty much all I needed to say.
Okay.
Stay on the line, Mike, because we're going to have continued discussion and take a roll call vote.
Okay.
So, discussion?
Simon? I agree that we should meet on that weekend. I'm good with that. My concern is that the true numbers, the numbers won't be in at that point. If we're looking at 25th, 24th, 25th being the days that we're most concerned with, and if it takes five to seven days to actually show any symptoms of this, those numbers will probably not be reported until the following week. So we really won't have those numbers in by then, by the 2nd.
We won't have the full state numbers to throw up on the board, but we should know how many people are symptomatic and not returning. The Board of Health is still going to operate during that week and we'll still know positive testing somewhere around Saturday or Sunday from that previous week. Because they're not even, from my understanding and what I've been reading and hearing, it's now five to seven days for close contact and contact tracing.
If we look at the Thanksgiving numbers, okay? The week after Thanksgiving, the numbers didn't start increasing as quickly until the following week.
No, I'll give you that.
That's all, I mean, I'm still saying, yeah, let's meet that Saturday and let's look and review and see where we are at that point. I'm just afraid we won't have a full picture at that point of what...
Oh, it may be meeting and then there's a meeting and another meeting in another week, you know? It could be that.
When do we meet in January? Do we meet the 2nd?
15th.
Only the 15th, okay. I said the 2nd, but I meant the... We don't meet the first Tuesday.
No, it's the 12th, not the 15th.
12th, sorry.
12th.
12th and 26th.
I'd just like to add, in the meantime, I'd like to see if we can ramp up some of our protocols within the school. I'd like to see the stop of indoor mask breaks. I'm aware that there are some areas where there are indoor mask breaks and others where there are not. So it seems somewhat inconsistent across the different classrooms that I've touched on. And I'd also like to see if Dr. Flanagan could draft a notice to families over Christmas break or, you know, that winter break there, just reiterating the state's guidance on out-of-state travel and not, and having a certain quarantine period. And as well as, there's some level of group size that you're not supposed to be in or quarantine, and that group size seems to change quite a bit. I've heard 10, I've heard six. I'm not sure which one it is right now. But, you know, in conjunction with this, I'd like those measures to be followed as well.
I... Dr. Flanagan is a little confused.
So I think that's a separate conversation. I think we should...
There's some negotiated operational things that the school committee is creeping into now. So we'd have to have a further discussion about some of those requests.
Sure.
I think we should talk about the motion on the floor and then we can revisit.
Sure.
One thing I think we haven't talked about, and I think maybe kind of goes along with this motion, too, is our school buses and being able to have a sense around transportation and if there are any concerns about their operational abilities or even what we're looking at from, you know, if there are any concerns there, you know, what our next steps would potentially have to be if they had any issues.
I would just say that I think the number of air changes that can happen on a school bus are plentiful. By cracking the window a quarter of an inch or half inch every window and bundling the kids up, you can get as many as 20 air changes on a bus, school bus ride. So school buses, the research is showing that are actually much safer, which is why I think we anticipate some updated guidance from DESI at some point soon. As long as the drivers aren't using recirculated air, airflow in the school bus is making those actually much safer than anyplace. But that's where we are with that.
And do we know if there's, I don't even know if we have this information. Do we know if there are enough bus drivers that are, whether they're calling out because they're sick or anything like that? Do we have any concerns about potentially having a lack of drivers?
That's, not passing the buck. That's Dee's responsibility to fill that. We contract with Dee Bus. So they have not, at any point, expressed to us that they have a concern with that. So to my knowledge, I don't think there's an issue. Certainly something I can look into or have Joe Messina follow up on.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Could we just restate the motion?
So, Tony, your motion, why don't you restate?
My motion was to continue at status quo until after the Christmas break, revealing either on December 2nd or 3rd. I don't know, Sundays work better for people, Saturdays work better. But the weekend after New Year's.
We'll coordinate schedules and pick a time and we'll announce it. And just to clarify, status quo is remain in the current hybrid model?
Correct.
As we are.
Yes.
Okay. So this will be a roll call vote. To the left?
Not in favor.
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
If someone could just clearly articulate that, there's the mobile phone connectivity on your end is spotty.
So the motion is to continue with the status quo and revisit this in early January, either January 2nd or 3rd after the winter break.
I am in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm not in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
So that passes 5-2. Are there any other motions anybody would like to bring up?
I don't know if this needs to be a motion, but I'd like to make a motion that we have a joint board meeting with, between the school committee and the Board of Health in early January. I don't know if that needs to be a motion.
No, I don't think it needs to be a motion. I can, we can reach out.
Yeah, reach out, yeah.
All right.
Now, another entity that I think is really important is the nurses in our school. I don't know if that would be, because I feel like the Board of Health is removed and the nurses in the school are the ones that are seeing it every day.
So our lead nurse is actually on the Board of Health.
They are.
Michelle Riley is, dual role, so.
Great. How many nurses are, one?
One.
Okay. What is it?
Could I ask, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm curious, the two members that voted not in favor, what would they rather see?
Sure, I'll speak to that, yeah.
If you would.
I'd like to see increased protocols within the schools. I'd also like to see the schools go remote, effective tomorrow, until the day after Martin Luther King Day, which I think is like the 19th, whatever that Tuesday is. We saw a significant spike in cases after Thanksgiving, and that was two extra days. I think we're talking about seven extra days with the Christmas break. And I can only imagine what seven extra days is going to cause. So that's, that's why I'm not in favor. I agree with the meeting on the 2nd. I don't agree with staying status quo for now.
Very similar to that. I think we do have a Jewish population in town, so Hanukkah has already been underway. So we won't see any of those numbers yet necessarily. I definitely agree with having the meeting in early January to see what's going on there. But I am, I definitely have concerns that if we stay status quo through the holiday season, we might find ourselves losing more in-person time after the holidays because we, I'm worried that we're going to see a runaway train. And that's my concern.
I'd like to add mine as well. I did vote in favor of your proposal on that. I mean, I think it makes sense, absolutely. I think either way I voted, I would have been happy with having that meeting to continue looking at the numbers. Because I understand this is a completely fluid situation. And I think the more meetings that we have during these times are good. It's better when we have more meetings. I do, I would like to see the schools go full remote, not this week coming up, but the week of Christmas and until just after Martin Luther King Day. I'm completely in favor of that. I'm completely in favor of that. I just know that we don't have the support for that in this room. I also do know that, and we all know that, as parents, we also have the ability to make the decisions for our grandchildren. We can decide that our children are going to be out during that time and go remote, if we think that it is the best for our kids. And I would encourage any parent in this district to make a decision that is best for their children.
And I think that is a great point. Not to interrupt you, but 100% I agree with you.
I was good at that point, so you're not interrupting me. I know I got these big pauses in between my statements.
And I think it's important that we stress that, that any parent out there that does not feel comfortable sending their children to Tinsborough Public Schools because of coronavirus can keep their children home full remote. It's very, very important that we stress that. And that's it for me.
Now, can I just ask a question about that? I know at the beginning, we were saying that if you go remote, you can't go back. Now, we've lifted those restrictions, right?
Yes.
So I just wanna make that clarity to parents.
The expectation by Department of Elementary and Secondary is that, you know, if you choose a learning model, if you choose to go remote and you request to come back in, we have to accommodate you in a reasonable time period, so we have to make sure that we have seats available, staffing available, it's not gonna happen overnight. But within a few weeks, we'll get you back and we'll accommodate any family. And to the, you've seen the numbers, we've had several families come out and in since the beginning of the school year, so...
And I wasn't trying to put anybody on the spot by asking that question, I'm just curious as to what the thought process is, and what it is that those members, what your concerns are, because without a motion, I don't really know what you want, or, so I appreciate you answering those questions, so thank you.
Does anybody have any other points for the new business COVID update?
I do. So Dr. Flanagan, you said that I was encroaching on some of our negotiated terms.
Correct.
What is the appropriate forum to have this discussion?
Well, it'd have to be Impact Bargain with the union. In our reopening plan specifically states that we have mask breaks, so if we wanted to...
I didn't ask to remove mask breaks, I asked to remove indoor mask breaks.
I'd have to, I'd have to have a conversation with the administration and see what that looks like. I don't know what the exact language is right now off the top of my head, but it's something that we have to revisit.
Sure.
Can I ask how, I haven't been to one of the schools when an indoor mask break is happening, but how are they, what exactly is an indoor mask break? And how are our students separated and so on and so forth? It's just...
So indoor mask break happens in the classrooms, kids having a snack in the classroom as well, the masks come off and they're six feet apart, designed by their spacing in the classroom, and it's just an opportunity for kids to breathe freely for a few minutes without the mask on.
So it's usually around like an eating period, or just...
It can be every period. It's every period at the high school. I know that at the high school, they generally walk outside to the front of the school, we see them out here all day, every day, teachers taking walks with the kids outside, they'll take their mask off for a few minutes, and then they come back into the school. I think the indoor mask breaks primarily happen at the elementary, middle school, different areas, with different locations they can go take mask breaks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? Are we meeting this week again?
Tuesday.
Maybe Tuesday.
We have a regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Yep. Okay, so we will move to school committee discussion, Mr. Buck?
No, good at this time.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time that I haven't already said.
Tony?
I just wanna thank everybody for being here today, these are Sunday afternoons at noon. None of us get paid for this, we are all volunteers, and none of us are experts in any of these fields, so we show up, we give our opinions, we do the best we can, and just thank you to everybody for taking the time out and caring.
I just wanna say that this is an incredibly confusing time, because there is so much information out there, and some of it is, like you were saying, is conflicting, and it's very hard making these decisions. But we're all doing the best we can, and we're all, you know, getting together as much as we can to make these decisions and keep moving the best way forward for our kids in Tinsborough. But I thank the teachers, and I thank Dr. Flanagan, so it's hard work, I know it's been tiresome. Thank you.
Could I just make one clarification?
Sure.
I threw out a comment that 40% of all 15-minute rapid tests are false positives. I don't know if that's the exact figure. I use that figure, but I don't know if that's the exact figure, so...
I can't cite you on that?
Don't cite me on that.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming in today. I think, you know, I appreciate you all giving up your time on the weekend, I know it was last minute, I think it was warranted with the numbers that we're seeing in the town, and I appreciate the constructive dialogue and the positive dialogue that we can all have, and not leave here feeling negative about each other. So, thank you all for that, and I appreciate that everybody's got the best interest of our students at heart.
Michael Moser, thank you.
I agree, I appreciate everybody coming in, I appreciate the different viewpoints, too. Sometimes you need somebody to ask a question and challenge a belief in order for you to, you know, really look into it. It's very easy to stay status quo, but until somebody says, hey, what about this? Am I doing the right thing? I am very confident in our learning model, but like I said, I do appreciate, you know, the challenges, the questions, you know, raising alternatives, and thanks for spending your Sunday afternoon here. Without that, there is no need for executive session, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion? In favor? That's a 6-0-0. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.